Okay, we'd like to call this meeting to order. May we please have roll call?
Certainly. Councilmember Snyder?
Present.
Councilmember Holliver?
Present.
Councilmember Fung?
Here.
Vice Mayor Pappin?
Here.
Mayor Aliva?
Here.
All council members are present.
Can we please stand for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. So tonight, we have no ceremonial presentations. So I'd like to move right to the agenda overview with our city manager, Tom Williams.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good evening to you, members of the city council, Tom Williams, city manager. We, as you mentioned, we do not have any ceremonial presentations. We don't have anything on the agenda for approval of meeting minutes. We have no oral reports from any city committee or commissions this evening. We would then move into public communication. This is the section on the agenda that any member of the public can address the city council on any item that's not on the agenda. The comments will be limited to three minutes. Then we move to the consent calendar. We have three items on the consent calendar this evening. Starting with item number five, which is to approve by motion the quarterly investment schedule for the fourth quarter fiscal year 2021-2022. Item number six is consider a resolution authorizing the city manager or designate to execute an easement deed to Pacific Gas and Electric Company for public utility facilities to serve the Alexandria Center for Life Science Project. Item number seven is an informational report for the 2022-2023 mayor and vice mayor rotation. Then we move into a public hearing. We have two items under public hearing this evening. Item number eight is to consider a resolution amending the Millbrae Station area specific plan to make various text and image changes. Second item for the public hearing is item number nine, and that is to hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution vacating a public utility easement at 1261 Sleepy Hollow Lane and authorizing the filing of the vacation resolution with the San Mateo County Recorder's Office. Then we move into existing business. Item number 10, adoption of a resolution authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute an agreement with the City of Burlingame and spin a bicycle sharing company and to a memorandum of understanding with the City of Burlingame for the multi-jurisdictional electric bicycle bike sharing program. There's no new, or one new business item, item 11, and that is to consider a resolution supporting the skyline Boulevard Bicycle and Pedestrian Improvement Project and submitting an application to San Mateo County Transportation Authority for the Cycle Six Pedestrian and Bicycle Program Funding Action. Then, Mayor, we move into city council comments and adjournment. So real quick, Mayor, just a couple of brief updates in terms of what's happening. As you all know, and the public is being engaged with our bi-monthly newsletter, the next one comes out this Friday. So for everyone out in the community, be sure to sign up for our e-notification on our website, and the newsletter can be accessed from our website and also sent through our e-notification system as people sign up for it. Also, the City of Millbrae, as you know, we've adopted our Simplicity app to connect with residents. This is, can be downloaded on any mobile phone using Simplicity, S-I-M-P-L-I-C-I-T-Y. You can download the app, and that app brings up all current events and scheduled events that are happening within the city. Also, our Citizens Academy, I'm happy to report, and some of you have set in on some of the Citizens Academy, we've had our third. So we're halfway through. Session one was the introduction to city government, how the city council functions, city manager's role, and how the city manager's office functions, and city attorney. Session number two was the city clerk, all things district elections and FFPPC and commission committee structure. And last week was session three, which was human resources, finance, and budgeting. And then this Thursday is our session four, and that's our community development and recreation department. So it's been going great. We've got, you know, great feedback from the attendees, a total of 16 residents have been participating. Also, as I mentioned last, last meeting, Mr. Sam Batista was hired and started last week ago, Monday, October 3rd, as our new director of engineering and public works. And it's been a pleasure to have Sam onboard, just even the short time, with his extensive experience in engineering and public works. Sam is a graduate from USC, University of Southern California, and has over 20 years of experience in the public sector. Sam started his engineering career, he's also a licensed professional engineer in the state of California, started with the city of Lathrop, then moved to the Bay Area and joined Millbrae back in the early 2000s, late 90s and early 2000s. And it's a funny story, one of our staff members in engineering still implements some of the policies that Sam wrote when he was a young, young engineer here. And so she was surprised to see the name and put the name to her face all these years later. So it's a great pleasure that I welcome Sam back to the City of Millbrae. We were able to steal him, unfortunately, from, more fortunately, from the City of Pacifica, where he was a deputy director that oversaw, and city engineer, oversaw engineering and public work. So Sam, again, welcome to the City of Millbrae. We had a great introduction with all city staff last week. Thank you, Ms. Councilmember Fung, for joining us. So, Sam?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, city council members. First, I'd really like to thank city manager Tom Williams and assistant city manager Isabel Carlos for giving me this great opportunity to come back to a community that I enjoy so much. As you heard, I started my Bay Area engineering career here at the City of Millbrae in 2001 and worked here till 2006. And I remember when Vice Mayor Pappin was elected. I remember when councilmember Holliver was figuring out which college you were going to go to. So in the past week, I've walked down Broadway and bumped into a lot of people that I, that I remember, and they remember me. So it's great to be in a place, and it's a great feeling to know people in a place that I work in. So I look forward to working with the city council on their priority projects. I look forward to working with the residents, the businesses, and of course, our, our great City of Millbrae team. So thank you very much for welcoming me.
Thank you, Sam. Welcome. Okay, city manager, can I move on?
Just a couple of quick events, Mayor, if I may. We have our Halloween home decorating contest. The Millbrae Community Enhancement Advisory Committee does present this year's Halloween Home Decorating Contest. The contest is open to all styles of homes, apartments, condominiums, and houses, and all residents are encouraged to create the spookiest Halloween display and share those with the community. The deadline to submit pictures of homes is Monday, October 31st, by 11:59 PM, so midnight. Winners will be chosen at the November 1st Community Enhancement Advisory Committee meeting and will receive a gift card to a local business. And so the pictures of the Halloween decorations can be submitted by email to contest@ci.milbrae.ca.us. Again, contest@ci.milbrae.ca.us. And then also, just a couple of events. We have Millbrae Goes to the Movies this Friday evening, October 14th, at 6:30 PM. And this, this movie will be held inside the Great Hall in our Recreation Center. Also, October 20th, Thursday, October 20th, is our Beats, Brews, and Vines Downtown Concert. Starts at 5:00 PM and ends at 7:00 PM. It's on the 300 block between Broadway, or on Broadway between Hillcrest and La Cruz. So there are booths for food and drinks available for purchase, and registration is not required. This is a free event, and it's open to all, so hope to see everyone there. And then Friday, October 21st, is the kickoff of the Millbrae Art Show. It will start at 6:00 PM and go to 9:00 PM. And then also, that's on October 21st, on a Friday. And then October 22nd, on Saturday, is from noon to 6:00 PM. And so the Millbrae Cultural Arts Advisory Committee is spearheading this, it's part of their work program, and so we're happy to have the Millbrae Art Show back live here in the city. So that concludes an update and things happening.
Perfect. Lots happening.
And the Man and Woman of the Year is also on Friday, so Man, Woman, and Student of the Year. And so if you've signed up, I think it's sold out, Vice Mayor. So you can drop the kids off at the movie, go to Man and Woman of the Year, come back and pick them up.
Good idea. Okay, so let's, we move to approval of minutes, of which we do not have any. We have no oral reports from the city committee or commissions tonight. I'll move on to public comment. Anybody that would like to make a comment that is not on the agenda? And I'm looking, I see we have two hands up. We have first, Amy Lau. Amy?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you so much, Mayor and city council and members of the public who are in attendance. I'm here this evening with a request for city council to take action to acknowledge and reject the covenants, conditions, and restrictions that are still on housing deeds throughout Millbrae that restrict members of our community from actually owning a home or living here. These are racially restrictive covenants. There was an article in The Chronicle in November, which sparked the development of an event at our Millbrae Library. It was a Millbrae Library event that was co-sponsored with Millbrae Art with research and presentation by Joe Teresi, community member who presented maps and examples of restrictive covenants in our housing deeds in multiple neighborhoods in Millbrae. We also had an attendee, Mr. Irazara, from the county assessor's office, who explained how, under the new law, that our county has compliant and made it easier if you locate a racially restricted covenant in your housing deed, how to remove it. It is a multi-step process, and we plan on doing a test case just to see how hard or easy it is. So my request of the city council is to find ways to, one, raise awareness of these racial covenants, and, two, at minimum, pass a city resolution stating our position of rejecting such covenants and standing, you know, true to the mission of Millbrae, which includes embracing cultural diversity in a safe environment, as well as enhancing the quality of life in our shared community. So what I'm looking for is an acknowledgement of our statement of inclusivity. There are other actions that can be done, including taking this forward into the 2040 general plan, some unconscious bias training for our planning commission, who refers to the preservation of historical look and feel of neighborhoods without considering who was omitted from that history, and clear decisions for, clear filters for decision-making. So I have a lot of other ideas. If you're interested, I can share the link from our presentation, and I do thank you for your time, and I am done. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we had one other hand raised. Angelina Callahan. Angelina?
Hello. Hello, Mayor, city council, members of the public. This past Thursday, I watched the planning commission session on the 2040 general plan, and I was very pleased and grateful to hear the commission give so much attention to issues on the east side of El Camino. We have the two neighborhoods, Marina Vista and Bayside Manor, that, as we know, have very limited access in and out of these neighborhoods. This is a significant issue for both safety and mobility, which are two of the elements in the general plan. However, solutions to address these mobility access and safety issues in these neighborhoods are not in the general plan. At the planning commission meeting, it was said that the specific and general plans are just policy documents, and that we can still address these issues outside of the general plan. The consultants even offered to come up with one or two programs to address these issues, but in that discussion, it was unclear if that will definitely happen, or if that will be added to the plan or be separate. While I understand we can do this outside of the plan technically, I'm advocating that these solutions be in our 2040 general plan. These safety issues have been here for years and not addressed, and if we don't put them in the plan that guides the next 20 years, it will be very easy for these issues to once again fall by the wayside. Residents in these neighborhoods need to be assured that their safety and mobility will be addressed. The general plan, I believe, will be reviewed for the city council at the November 15th meeting, and I'm speaking out now so that the city council and the city staff can start working to ensure that when the time comes for the vote, the vote, our final 2040 general plan will include solutions for mobility, circulation, and safety for Marina Vista and Bayside Manor neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have next, Michael Kelly.
Hi, thank you. Are you able to hear me?
We hear you.
Great. Michael Kelly here, and I am one of the co-founders of the Millbrae Anti-Racist Coalition. Wanted to just put a quick shout out and thank you to city manager Tom Williams for announcing these upcoming events in the city. But there's one event tomorrow night in this very same venue, the Millbrae Council Chambers. There's going to be a Meet the Candidates Night that is moderated by the Millbrae Chamber of Commerce. Some of the organizational efforts were in collaboration with Millbrae Art, the Anti-Racist Coalition. It's at 7 o'clock. I believe doors open at 6:45. It's going to go for 90 minutes. I believe all four candidates, that two of which will end up on city council come next year, that all four candidates will be there. They've been presented with questions from the community, and they'll have the opportunity to share their vision, their thoughts, the planks in their platform, and it's one of the only opportunities, if not the only one, for the voters in Millbrae to understand and get to know these four candidates, two of which, again, will be serving on council next session, as our current council member Holliver and Mayor Aliva are terming out. So I wanted to make mention of that. I'm very mindful that this is not a venue for campaigning. So staying away from campaigning, I did want to call out that there is some disturbing information that was shared with me and Millbrae Art by the, some residents in District Four. Apparently, there's a write-in candidate who has a campaign staff going out knocking on doors, saying that candidate Maurice Goodman just moved to Millbrae to get to run for city council.
I'm sorry, this is campaigning. We need to stop this. This is totally campaigning. Michael, please don't cross the line on us. We can't let you speak on that.
I apologize. I didn't think that was campaigning.
And we're talking, we're talking a race. We can't go there. So thank you very much, Michael. I appreciate the time that you put here. Let's go next to former Mayor Wayne Lee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the city council. I also want to reiterate, my walking through the Marina District and Bayside Manor, and my friends there, have all indicated a desire to have a second way out in case of emergency, but they don't want it opened all the time. But we also want to make sure that, that it doesn't become a freeway for people as a bypass to Millbrae and El Camino, where a lot of cars are going through. There's already, there's not going to be a huge parking impact in those neighborhoods as well, so that should also be addressed in the general plan, and also flooding, of course. I'm sure that you're, you're already on that, and I've already spoken to the airport too, and the manager, the directors told me that they're going to keep the canal clean and invited me to inspect it. So I think that that's really good progress with the airport, and thanks to Tom Williams' work on that, I think he was very instrumental in making that happen. So...
I lost you.
I think that we just, we, parking, traffic issues is going to be a huge thing, not only in those neighborhoods, but in most of Millbrae, and we need to really focus on that, and the parking, the parking district, as well as providing, dissuading people from parking in our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. City clerk, I don't see any other hands raised, do you?
Madam Mayor, I do not, and we do not have any in-person speakers slip as well.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we're going to go to our next...
Actually, okay. Sorry.
We do? I'm sorry, are we good to go?
Yes, I do apologize.
No worries. So we're going to move to the consent calendar. We have three items on the consent calendar. Item number five, approve a motion about the quarterly investment schedule for the fourth quarter of the fiscal year 2021 and 22. Item number six, resolution authorizing the city manager or designate to execute an easement deed to Pacific Gas and Electric for public utility facilities to serve the Alexandria Center for Life Science Project. And item number seven, informational report for the 2022-23 mayor and vice mayor rotation. Counsel, do we have a motion?
I'm sorry, Mayor, my hand's been up, and I don't think you can see it. I would like to pull item number seven from consent.
You want to pull item number seven?
From consent, thank you.
And are you making a motion to consent the other two?
Motion to approve consent items number five and number six.
Second.
We have a second? Can we please call for the vote?
Councilmember Snyder?
Aye.
Councilmember Holliver?
Aye.
Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pappin?
Aye.
Mayor Aliva?
Aye.
Consent items number five and six passed by the vote of five to zero.
Hey, councilmember Snyder, would you like to speak on item number seven?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number seven is an informational item, so this is more to the public that has contacted me. The rules, and I'm reading from the actual agenda item, "Rules set forth are not all-inclusive and do not limit the inherent power and general legal authority of the council." The reason I pulled this is since we have an election that will be ending in about a month, and there'll be a new city council, I didn't want to vote, even though it's an informational item on the consent calendar, because I believe that the decision is up to the new city council. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Move approval of item seven.
Do we have a second?
We don't have to, yeah. Okay.
Yes, we do. Oh, it's informational, information.
No action required.
No action required. Okay. Then we will move to item number eight, public hearing. Item number eight, to hold a public hearing considering a resolution amending the Millbrae Station area specific plan to make a various text and imagery change. And city manager Tom Williams, would you like to introduce Nestor and associate planner Bruce?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to just also acknowledge the city council subcommittee, Vice Mayor Pappin and Councilmember Fung. We've worked hard over the last couple of years, actually, on these, on these images. So it's a pleasure to share these amendments with all of you this evening, and I'd like to introduce Mr. Nestor Quovera, our associate planner, and also we have Mr. Bruce Burbaker from Placeworks, who was instrumental in helping us get here this evening. They can also be part of the presentation, so, Nestor?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. The item before you tonight is for Millbrae Station area specific plan amendments. Again, just a quick agenda item objective, it's a consideration of a resolution amending the MSASP to make various text and image amendments. Just to quick, give a quick bit of background information, the MSASP, as you know, was the update was adopted by the city council back in February of 2016. The document guides future development in the areas surrounding the Millbrae Station. Some of the images in the document do not reflect the council or the community's vision for Millbrae and future developments in Millbrae, excuse me. So the item before you tonight is a recommendation of replacement images that are more in line with the vision of Millbrae's future. To give a quick timeline of where we've, where we've been up to here, we've had multiple meetings with both the planning commission and the city council. We then selected Placeworks, our consultant, to aid in the effort to, to look for replacement images and to update the document. The city council appointed a subcommittee to work on the MSASP images and tax amendments. And now we have before you tonight the recommended images that are ready for, for council discussion. And with that said, I'll pass it along to Bruce at Placeworks, who'll go through the images more in detail.
Thank you, Nestor. I'm also joined by my colleague Pranjali Deokul, associate at Placeworks, who's watching us online. So it's a pleasure to be back in city council chambers, Madam Mayor and city council. I will step through the image amendments that are being proposed tonight, and there are approximately 21 images that are being proposed to be replaced. In every case, we have a slide that shows the existing page in the document and a proposed image that would change the image in the existing document. So, and at your pleasure, I can wait and entertain discussion on any of these images, but I will just go through these until somebody tells me that they'd like to discuss. So the first image is the actual cover of the document, which is being proposed to be replaced by a skyline of Millbrae and an image from the Alexandria Development Project. The next image is on page 3.1 in the specific plan to replace an image that is associated with a vision statement that talks about a vibrant and active, you know, specific plan area. And the proposed image, images to replace it are two, which you see on the screen and in your document, that show a more lively environment and lots of people, and these are both images from Millbrae.
I'm sorry. I can raise my hand, but the mayor can't see my hand. Yeah. Can you start us off on this one? The reason I like the existing image is it shows planting, it shows green roofs, or at least green balconies, and it's got public art, it's got a water feature. I understand one came from Beats and Brews and one's our car show. Can we have all of them? Can I, can I, what is it called? Take the Baby and the Bathwater? I can't remember the phrase.
Yes, that's a good phrase.
But for a moment, let's, let's take all questions after the...
That's what you like, Mayor, sure.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so I will proceed.
Thank you.
Page 3.4, a network of public, of public open spaces. There's an image on the far right with the red box around it showing an open space from a different place. The proposed image has a more intimate space and probably more in keeping with the scale of the type of open space that this specific plan will accommodate. Image 3.5 is about building setbacks, and the, the red box around the image in the far left of the existing page would be replaced with this image that shows how a building would step back in relationship to its neighbor. On page 3.5 as well, but in the image on the right side of the existing page, there would be a replacement image showing, for this environmentally sustainable neighborhood topic, showing a green roof with lots of sustainable plantings on the roof of a building. On page 4.16, we are showing to, under the topic, accommodate an appropriate amount of vehicle parking. We're showing a big parking lot, and the proposal is to show two sets of images, one on the left that shows wayfinding for how to get to parking resources, and the one on the right showing a driveway entry that's well landscaped, leading to an internal garage. On page 4.17, under utility infrastructure, we... On page four dot one seven, under utility infrastructure, we put a placeholder image here of a, a set of high-power lines. Uh, the proposed amendment is to show, uh, fiber optic cable being, uh, installed. Page five point one one, street wall height and stepbacks. Here we show a, a picture of a building that has a stepback, uh, where the top story is not at the building, at the frontage line, but actually steps back some distance. The proposed image also shows that stepback with a different kind of architecture. Page five point one six, under usable open space, we show two images, um, which don't happen to have much activity in them, so the proposal is for, um, usable open spaces that do show activity and are appropriate for the, um, specific plan area. Both those images would be used. Um, on page five point one seven, off-street parking standards, there's an existing page showing an entry to a garage and a proposed page also showing an entry to a garage with, uh, more, uh, with architecture more in keeping with, um, Millbury. On page five point one six, um, no, I went backwards, sorry. Here we go. Chapter six title page, replacing the, the actual title page of chapter six with a different image that focuses more on, um, on, on a different type of architecture um, for the entry to this chapter about private development design standards and guidelines.
And let's note, we're using a project that we approved.
This is...
Um, that's more preferred, thank you.
Page six point three, gateway design, uh, is a small photo on the lower corner of this, uh, text page. Um, there are two proposed images here that are both being considered, and council could weigh in and give us guidance on which is preferred or both. Um, the, the two options include, uh, include a, a corner with a lot of activity on it, uh, as well as a, a plaza with a lot of activity in it, and both could serve as illustrating a gateway design. And the, the intent of this, um, standard is really to talk about, um, Millbury Avenue and El Camino Real as being two major thoroughfares in, in Millbury and having a gateway element that really does communicate, uh, the idea of Millbury to passersby. On page six point seven, we have a standard for building articulation and massing, and, uh, the, the proposed images, image you see on the right is meant to replace that image on the left. Here's an image of windows arranged to create rhythm, and the proposed image does seem to do a good job of creating a, a rhythm of, of window placement on the facade of the building. Another image on page six point eight, architectural character, so this was meant to communicate kind of forward-thinking architecture in Millbury, and the proposed image, uh, on the right is one that also communicates a forward-thinking architecture. Page six nine, sustainable building design, so, um, replacing that, that central image with one that clearly focuses on green roof, sustainable stormwater collection, and other sustainable features. And then six point nine, vehicle driveway design. Again, this is, uh, this is a replacement for a image that has very little landscaping. The, the proposed image has a driveway with landscaping flanking it on both sides. And then on six twelve, landscaping helps to define spatial organization. Um, there is an image on the upper right of the existing page being proposed to, to be replaced by that image that you see here. In a transportation chapter, we talk about fixed route bus service in the text, and we had a, a simple image of a bus. Uh, the proposed image replacement is a, an image of the future El Camino Real bus stop, um, with a bus in it as well. It's a better representation of, of bus service for the future. And then, uh, seven point nine, vehicle circulation improvements. Um, it's a pretty stark photo, I have to admit, on the left side, uh, being replaced with a pretty lush, lively, and frankly, pretty photo of what El Camino Real could be like. Oh, no, this is actually the, an image from the, um, the bar station, uh, the gateway proposal, so. And then I think this is our last one, uh, seven point one three, under transportation demand management, replacing this stark photo with a lot more activity and also focusing on bicycle and multimodal transportation. So with that, I'm happy to have conversation about it, and, uh, the staff recommendation is, is on screen.
Thank you very much. I'm sure we have council comment, and councilmember Schneider? Would you like to start?
Thank you, mayor. Um, thank you, and thank you for the subcommittee for finding a lot of really terrific images, a great improvement. I, I have an overarching concern. Because I'm on the airport noise roundtable, I spend a lot of time with noise, and the more hardscape Millbury has, the noisier we will be. And that's an oversimplification, but it really is a reflective, inert surfaces reflect, and as we've learned, actually increase the noise as the noise moves from the airport or the trains up the hills. Um, so, I love the images, of course, I love everything with green, but I'm still concerned that there's quite a bit of, of cement showing in everything. And maybe it just means we have to be on the lookout, or there has to be other text. My biggest fear, as the state keeps taking away more and more of our control to look at projects, is our ability to encourage more greenery, or wh- what Ruben did for the Gateway Project, to go from a little bit of affordable housing to 25% affordable housing. So if we can do it in text and say that we are in a noise-concerned area, and, uh, it's one of the reasons why I really like the Longfellow Building. It has a green wall along the railroad tracks, and that will actually help absorb some of that railroad sound or the train sound, even in, under electrification. So, my general feeling is, I love all the images except one, and, um, I love this, but I'd love to see more greenery or a discussion of how we need to really work on the greenery. And I think the best way to say that, I was in Milan, not to be vacationing, dreaming of vacationing, but I am amazed, for a city that did get blown up a lot in World War II, but how green that city is. And when you go through the old town and the new town, there is green everywhere on that, and it really makes for a beautiful walking city for that. Um, so the only image I really, I love, love the new front page. Um, I would prefer under vision and goals, that maybe we do all three. Um, I do come from a photography family, typically, we don't like to see people's butts, and I will say that that person is a friend of mine. Um, it's just not something that you typically like in a decent photograph. But, that said, uh, if we could keep more than less, the one that I really don't like, and I know that there is disagreement on the council between the direction that architectural design should go, I'm sorry, I'm trying to get to that page, is... It's that ultra-modern with the circle in the roof. I, I'm a little confused, was that supposed to be?
Please pick it out.
Oh, the page six point eight?
Go to the next page.
So, i- is that what it is? I couldn't quite understand from the printout that I got. So that, that one is gone? And instead, it's that lovely one down below it? Then I'm a happy camper. And well done.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Yeah. Uh, madam mayor?
Yes, please.
Okay.
This is the one that...
I'd like to thank the staff and, uh, the subcommittee, uh, councilmember Fung and I. Um, tragically, when this first went through, we were assured that, "Oh, nobody'll judge you by the pictures." And sadly, developers came in and said, "Well, that picture is in your station area specific plan." So, these updates are long overdue as to what we want to express, the standards we would like to see in Millbury. And as you can see from the pictures that are removed, um, they were far from what we envisioned Millbury to be, and I am so thankful that they are being removed from this plan, uh, because, yeah, you just got boxes and windows, boxes and windows, uh, parking lots, I mean, they were just terrible, um, high-powered wires. Uh, so, I am exceptionally happy with the work that has gone into this. I think that, um, it will now reflect a standard. I hope that our planning department can, um, help, uh, anybody coming here to build understand that these are our expectations here. Um, I do think there, we were asked on section six point three, there were two options here. If we can't put both in, then I think the council's being asked to figure out which one they prefer.
And what is your priority?
Uh, I like option one, but that's just me.
All right.
Somebody else?
Yeah, I'll take option one, too.
Madam mayor?
One more.
My counterpart, I believe, is option two.
Well, actually, I prefer option three, which is to put both on it, so that we can show people a vision, right, as to what we can be, rather than, uh, boxing people in. This, this document is there to, um, sort of show a vision and options as to what Millbury can be for tomorrow. Right? And so, from that standpoint, um, if, on the page, real estate, if it is not too expensive, I like to make sure these images both can be, you know, can appear on the page. And I'm sure there's a way, we can find a way to fit them in somehow by rearranging the text.
I think that was presented to us, so I think that's not a problem.
I agree.
All right, so we would like both, both those images, please, on page six point three.
Madam mayor, I think councilman Holliver has a comment.
Sure, but I...
I had a few comments, but I did have a question about, um, option two, do we know where that came from? I have a guess, but, uh, I can make a presumption.
I believe that's a rendering.
Is, is it a rendering of a proposed development in Millbury that has not been approved yet?
No. I, this is not a rendering that has anything to do with Millbury, as of yet.
That's right, I believe you, uh, brought that to the discussion.
I did, I think I'd, uh...
It might be overseas, actually.
I- it's not a real-life, uh, photo. I believe it's a rendering.
Okay, I, for a moment, I thought it was a rendering that has been presented in Millbury that the city has not yet approved, but if, if not, then I'd be, uh, okay with that. My preference would be option one, if it sounds like there's a consensus to keep both, um, I'm okay with that. Um, I did have a couple other comments, though, on, uh, number three point one. Um, I think my preference would be to keep the existing, uh, existing image. I think, you know, the proposed images are, you know, special events that are be host, being hosted in Millbury. I think the vision, though, would want it to be vibrant, 365 days of a year, uh, of the year, not just, uh, when there's special events in town. So, I think, uh, three point one shows more of a vibrant, um, storefront type of environment that we would like to see throughout the year, and not just, um, every now and then when there's an event.
Um, can I propose here, um, because we have a lot of open space there, um, that we do include one of our special events? Just given the description here, transform into a vibrant daytime and evening activity district. I think that's what we were going with, um, mixed uses. Um, so, I think that's what we were trying to show, but I'm okay with leaving the one, but maybe including one of the others as well.
Yeah, I would be fine with that. Um, I don't necessarily have a preference between either of the proposed images, um, as to which one to keep.
Uh, if we are, if I, if I might, um, the one, uh, image seems very dark, at least, um, what I have here. If we could brighten up, um, the bottom one, uh, somewhat, because the top one, um, the car show, looks a lot brighter. So, if you choose either one of those, I do think the bottom one needs to be brightened.
So how about then, the, the first one, then, with the car show, um, side by side with the, uh, existing image? If we could do that?
I could do that. I'd agree to that.
All right, we got three votes on that one, we got three votes there.
And then one other comment on, uh, let's see, five point sixteen. Okay, uh, one of the, um, proposed amendments is of the Central Park Playground, very nice, uh, wonderful grand opening there earlier this year. I think the idea, though, for usable open space was not necessarily to present, you know, large parks, but more how open space can be, uh, accommodated within development. So things like courtyards, entry plazas, that type of thing. Um, so I think, you know, the second image is, uh, very much appropriate. The first one, I don't necessarily think would be the best display of that, so, um, I don't know. I think maybe something along the lines of what Alexandria has proposed for that kind of corner amenity area with outdoor seating, something like that, that shows how open space can be, um, brought into a, a new development.
Um, I, I think we wanted, the reason we had Central Park there is because it's one of our usable open spaces, and I think that's one of the best things we've ever done.
It is, um, it's not within the MSASP, uh, and it's, it's city property, it's not, um...
That is true, it's not, but I guess we're trying to encourage anything...
Vice Mayor? I'm trying to think, I was out driving through, I think it was through the city, or maybe it was South San Francisco, where they are inserting a lot of small playgrounds into commercial areas, into changing areas. So I, I, I hear what you're saying, but I think some of the putting, putting, um, some of that into an apartment complex, or putting that into around the train station, maybe that was it. I was looking at transit stuff and how they've made playgrounds near transit centers, so that if you're waiting two hours, you can take the kids out...
Pocket parks.
Yeah, and they can, they can blow off some steam in there. So, maybe what, i- if, again, split the baby, is that the phrase? Just talk about what the purpose might be, just give a title to the slide on that.
Fair enough. Okay.
I gotta tell you, living down the street from this park, since that new playground went in, it is so lively and so active, and it just makes you feel good seeing it. So if that's also the emotion.
So, point of order here for one second here, I did not open up the public hearing, so I would like to say that we are in public hearing. Michael, could you help me out here?
Um, you can open the public hearing when you do, when you take public comment.
All right, thank you, sorry about that, guys.
That's all I have, thank you.
And mayor, if you don't mind, if I can just go back to the discussion of six point three. I, I like councilman Fung's do one and two. The reason I like two is that, uh, we were at the library, we were at the new Millbury Rec Center last night looking for where to have the Dia, Dia de los Muertos event, and the new rec center has this atrium, and it's a whole new concept of how you can plan events for that. So I like this slide, because it gives you that idea that if a developer comes in and they dig down a little bit, they could put a piazza there, you can have two layers of around it, it just to me opens... Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on, uh, page six three, the ones where we were supposed to pick...
It's on, it's on the screen, too.
We're going for both.
It's on the screen, vice mayor.
Yeah, so I, I really like the, I don't like the building, the sharp angled one, I would blur that part of the photograph, but I do love how interactive it is and the different layers, and the idea to give developers of creating that open, active space. Does that make sense?
Yes.
All right, any other comments from the dais? Can we take some, open up the public hearing and hear from the... Can we take some, open up the public hearing and hear from the public then, please?
Mayor, there are no in-person speakers left for this item?
Perfect. Can you go ahead, Elaine?
There are none.
All right.
You want to close the public hearing, and I'll make a motion to approve.
I will, just let me check one second here, please, Vice Mayor. There's nobody that's coming forward. Okay, let's close the public hearing, and Vice Mayor, you have a comment?
Move approval.
Second by Andrew Fung.
In this point of, with, with the comments.
Correct.
As discussed by the council.
Correct. Thank you.
Can we please have a vote?
Councilmember Snyder?
Aye, and well done, staff.
Councilmember Holliver?
Aye.
Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pappen?
Absolutely.
Mayor Leva?
Yes.
Public hearing, hearing item number eight, passed by a vote of five to zero, with comments included by the city council.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Great job, guys. All right, we're going to move to item number nine, hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution vacating a public utility easement at 1261 Sleepy Hollow Lane and authorizing filing of the vacation resolution with the San Mateo County Recorder. And with that, I would like to open, no, let's have a presentation first.
Thank you, ma'am. I would like to introduce, proudly introduce, Mr. Sam Batista, our new Director of Engineering and Public Works for the presentation.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and city council members. Tonight's item before you is to hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution, is it on? Well, okay. And adopt a resolution vacating a portion of the public utilities easement located at 1261 Sleepy Hollow Lane. Just to give you some background, at the request and expense of the homeowner, the homeowner did submit all the documents needed to go ahead and vacate the portion of the existing PUE. And the main purpose of the vacation is to allow the property owner to expand his residence and then also add a swimming pool for the growing family. There are currently no city utilities within the PUE, and there's no intention of utilizing the entire PUE for the future use. So the property owner did gain concurrence, secure concurrence from utility companies agreeing to vacate the subject PUE, and staff has reviewed all the, all the documents and found them to be all accurate. In addition, staff did do the, all the required noticing as, as in accordance with the California Street and Highways Code. Okay, so as you can see, the, the existing PUE traverses through the middle of the property and along the entire 1,200 block of Sleepy Hollow Lane. The proposal is to reduce the existing PUE from 50 feet to 10, to a 10-foot wide easement as shown in the exhibit to the right. So the 10-foot PUE is shaded in yellow. And the recommendation is to, is that the city council, of course, hold the public hearing and then adopt a resolution vacating a portion of the existing PUE at 1261 Sleepy Hollow Lane and authorizing the filing of the vacation resolution with the San Mateo County Recorder's Office. And I'm happy to answer any of your questions.
Thank you. First, we'll open up the public hearing, and then I will go to council for any questions, Looks like somebody has their hand up. And that's Councilmember Snyder.
Thank you, Mayor. Question, the V ditch. There was a discussion in the staff report that they would maintain the V ditch, but one of the first sets of complaints I got when I was elected were who maintained the V ditches in Mills Estates, where there's several that run, obviously, horizontal along the hillsides. Are they only responsible for the V ditch in their section? Because what I got was employee, neighbors complaining about other neighbors, and if it isn't maintained, then it can cause flooding. How do we make sure that V ditches are maintained?
Typically, you know, you're correct, these are, it's a privately-owned V ditch. So the only way that, you know, to get onto a property is to actually inspect it. So if there happens to be, like, surcharge up the ditch, you know, typically, the residents will call us, and, and we will, you know, try to determine which house is blocking the flow and, and make sure that they unblock their ditch.
Okay. City manager, this isn't, I'm happy to support this tonight, but as we get out of COVID and we can start working on emergency preparedness, you know, this is, this isn't a wooie, this is a flood, hillside, disaster prep. So if we could add that to how to communicate with our residents and how important it is to keep the V ditches clean, and that would be citywide, then, for any place with a V ditch. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any public comments? Councilmember Snyder, you said you were willing to support it. Is that a motion?
Yes, Mayor, that is a motion to approve.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Come on, guys, wake up. I'm the one who's three hours ahead. All right, let's call for the vote.
Mayor, would you like to ask for any public comments?
I did, actually.
I apologize. Councilmember Snyder?
Aye.
Councilmember Holliver?
Aye.
Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pappen?
Aye.
Mayor Leva?
Yes.
All right. Public hearing item number nine, passed by the vote of five to zero.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to existing business, and we have, we have an adoption of a resolution authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute an agreement with the city of Burlingame and spin the vendor and memorandum of understanding with the city of Burlingame for the multi-jurisdictional electrical bicycle sharing program. Okay. Do we have, yes, Tom, do we have a presentation here?
We do, Mayor, and I'd like to introduce our environmental programs manager, the very hard-working Andrea Papajon, for a staff presentation.
Ah, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Leva, Vice Mayor Pappen, and council members. I'm Andrea Papajon, City of Millbrae. So staff has been working to develop a bike-sharing program and, with the city of Burlingame, and we'd like to recommend a vendor this evening. It's been really great working with the city of Burlingame, collaborating, multi-jurisdictional program, not only benefits bike users because they'd be able to cross jurisdictional boundaries, but it also would benefit the operator or the vendor because they would have the two cities to operate in and have economies of scale. So we issued a joint request for proposal, and it was to establish, install, operate, and maintain an electric bike-sharing program. We received three proposals, and we selected two for further evaluation, and we are recommending Spin as our chosen vendor. So when we developed the request for proposal, we defined the qualifications we were looking for, and these are some of the main reasons why we're recommending Spin. First of all, their local experience. They're a very highly qualified, experienced team capable of developing, operating a program. They've been around since 2016, and they currently operate a scooter program in San Francisco and an electric bike-sharing program in the city of Berkeley. We feel this successful local experience is really important because it demonstrates their ability to succeed in the Bay Area. Next, Spin is owned by Tier Mobility, a large micromobility provider with programs in 21 countries. So the Spin demonstrates their resilience in overcoming common micromobility challenges such as theft, vandalism, high operational costs, and staffing challenges. Next, Spin proposed a hybrid system with preferred parking zones, and I'll describe that a little bit in more detail in a future slide. But what I mean by a hybrid system is that it would be supported by parking corrals and bike racks. The system allows us to work with Spin and identify parking, preferred parking zones. So the zones could be marked with stencils and signage, and the preferred marking, the preferred parking zones would also be marked on the app, so easily identifiable by the user. We feel this system is a better fit for Millbrae than a docked system because a docked system would involve anchoring large docking stations into the ground that can't be easily moved or adjusted. So Spin's hybrid system may easily be adjusted to meet demand and could expand to other locations and even other cities. Next, Spin offers lower user fees than other proposals.
There's a comment from MCTV to speak closer to the microphone?
Yeah, I just lost sound.
Great, thank you. Another main reason why we are recommending Spin is because they have, they would have local staff manage and balance the bikes. They would have two local employees to manage daily operations from 7:30 a.m. to 10:30 p.m. to rebalance the bikes, and they would be able to address relocation requests typically within two hours. Spin also has a very strong commitment to sustainability. They have longevity of their bikes and batteries, and they're committed to recycle after their useful life. And finally, Spin proposed no cost to cities to implement and operate the program. So just briefly, how it works? You download the Spin app on your phone, and you can find location of bikes near you and the battery capacity available. And then you scan the QR code with your phone, it introduces, and then you sign up, and you sign the terms and conditions, and then it introduces you to a number of safety rules. You have to kind of thumb through those. Then you take your ride. When you're done, you can find a parking corral or bike rack labeled on the app. Then you park your bike, and you lock the bike, and you take a photo, and you submit it through the app, and that, then that can help make sure the bike is parked correctly. Okay, so just a little bit about the parking corrals and hybrid system. There's kind of two types of parking zones. There's the approved parking zone, which would be a P on the app, and then there's a preferred parking zone, which is designated by a dollar sign. So the approved parking zones could be throughout the city, in the public right-of-way, and could be like existing bike racks. We could also have, they could also designate preferred parking zones, they could, we can, Spin could install bike racks in preferred locations and would offer incentive, incentivized pricing, for example, to encourage parking in a preferred parking zone. If a user parked their bike there, they could get, for example, 50 cents off their next ride. And Spin has had much success in the incentivized parking in other cities. So potential parking locations could be, like, on the bayfront, at the multimodal station, along downtown, on Broadway, at the library, rec center, Central Park, and other parks. So this system really offers a lot of flexibility. For example, if Spin sees a high demand in a neighborhood, they can create a parking corral. Spin would also outreach to our businesses and, like, apartment owners or managers to see if they would be, if they would like a parking corral or zone at their location. So the next steps would be to finalize the contract with Burlingame and Spin and finalize the MOU with Burlingame. Then we would identify parking zones and do the outreach to the businesses and apartment owners. And also, as you know, we were awarded a San Mateo County Transportation Authority grant of $200,000, and the city would match $20,000. City of Burlingame also received the same grant, so we have $440,000 to support the successful bike-share program. So we plan to apply the funds to install bike racks and stenciling. Maybe some of the funds would go to incentivize rides, for example, discounts for first-time rides for the first month, so we can try to encourage many people as we can to try it. And even though there's no cost for the program, Spin asked if we would use some of the funds for bikes. The city wouldn't own the bikes, but we think this would be good because it would strengthen the program. It would take about five weeks to get launched. So thank you so much for your time. I'm here to answer any questions, and we also have a representative from Spin here to answer questions as well.
Okay, we have some good hands raised here. Let's go to Councilmember Fung first.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Andrea. This is an excellent program. Great work. I know you guys have been working on it for a while. So this is an excellent opportunity for us to really make a conscientious effort to reduce our reliance on fossil fuel, especially for local traffic as well, since we're so close to transit, right? And our downtown is going through such changes in terms of new development coming in. So this is a great opportunity to promote the use of e-bikes, so that it's a last mile of transportation to get to and from the transit station and our downtown destinations. So I think, you know, there's, there's an opportunity here where we could define these locations of, what do you call it, the corral and the parking, close to all the frequently publicly accessible area, like the library, the middle school, the high school, encouraging our youngsters to use the e-bike more often, for example, and get to and from the library, city hall, rec center, and transit center, obviously, and multiple downtown locations. I mean, just, and I'm just imagining how we also have, obviously, the biotech campuses coming in, coming in with 3,500 high-paying jobs. Imagine we have a parking in front of them and then ask these folks, these new daytime traffic, to come into our downtown and spend money during lunch and using this e-bike program. So that would be excellent. That would help reduce the reliance on private vehicles, reduce parking problems and congestion and all of that. So those are some of the things that I like to make sure that when we come to figuring out where these parking locations should be, we could be more strategic about it. Another thing is that, how much of that $440,000 funding we're thinking about using to subsidize the e-bike purchases?
Thinking approximately $100,000.
$100,000. I do know that PCE has a program to subsidize e-bike purchases, so there might be some opportunity for us to perhaps ask for resources there, so I'll be happy to work with you on that opportunity.
Great idea. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Feng. Let's go next to Councilmember Oliver.
Thank you. Thanks very much for all the hard work on this, and it's good, great that we're able to partner with our neighboring city. Do you have a question? In terms of this contribution, the $440,000, does that basically require, I guess maybe the contract hasn't been executed yet, but there should be some type of commitment from Spin as to, you know, how long they will operate this program in Millbrae, especially with such a large upfront contribution of public funds? You know, we don't want them to, you know, pull out in a couple of months if it's not going quite as well as they had envisioned. So is there any, has there been any discussion about that?
Yes, we have. In the contract draft, we are suggesting a two-year commitment with an option to extend for five years.
Okay, very good. Thank you. And I'm glad that these are sort of a hybrid system and not fully docked, because, you know, once you put up the docks, it's hard to move them. It's, you know, if the program isn't successful, it's hard to then, somebody has to remove them, and it's sort of a sunk cost at that point. So I'm glad that that is part of the deal as well. I think as Councilmember Feng was mentioning, how this could be used as a last mile transit, I think there are also opportunities perhaps with, you know, partnering with developers if there are new developments that are coming up that aren't, you know, right next door to transit but a little bit of a distance away, perhaps something that they could do to help mitigate the impacts is to either, you know, provide their own bikes for residents or to help contribute to this program to help build out this network. I think there are a lot of opportunities there. That's all I have. Thank you.
Great. May I just make a comment? I wanted to ask Feng Buie, if, do you have any comments on any experience you have in working with corporations that are nearby to get their employees to ride? Yeah, so I'd like to introduce Representative from Spin, Feng Buie.
Thanks so much for your time. We do have experience working with various corporations to have a spin-for-business, as we call them. Not yet in Millbrae or Burlingame, but we have a formalized partnership with Lyft as well, and have been in conversation with them about how we can together expand our network and reach out to businesses. We initially, in our RFP response, had also included our intent to reach out to various businesses, both in Millbrae and Burlingame, to ensure that there's buy-in from the local businesses that we can deploy there. Some businesses or some developments have bike racks, but since they're not in the public right-of-way, we wanted to make sure we get permission to deploy there and also collaborate on ways to advertise to residents or constituents or local workers so that we can increase the ridership of the program.
Can I continue with councilmember questions?
Yes.
We'll go to, yes, Vice Mayor Papin.
Thank you very much. Greatly appreciated here. Do you have a restriction, an age restriction on who can ride these?
So because we do require that users sign, review the terms of use and sign the liability waiver, they do have to be 18. But I do recognize the concern and the interest to encourage young folks to use active transportation. So I can take that feedback back to the legal team, but the age limit is primarily on the liability issues.
Yeah, and the helmet requirement for minors?
Yes.
Is that accommodated?
We do plan on participating in local community events and passing out free helmets as part of a way to incentivize folks and just provide free helmets for people who are going to be frequently using these bikes.
Okay, well, don't go anywhere. Don't go anywhere. If you haven't noticed, Millbrae has some extreme hills, and I didn't see that on the map. And so we have a population at the top of the hill. Will these bikes make it up the hill?
We are happy to do like an in-person demo.
I think we're going to need to, because I have had a car that barely makes it up the hill sometimes, previously. But it's an important aspect to the reality of our residents getting from the top of the hill down to the transit and back and forth. I did want to point out that you have baskets on the bikes, which I think will be helpful to people. We do, there is a population that depends on bikes. And so if we can, with some of our funding, encourage an equity program that would be helpful to that population, that we can assist more so. They don't have cars, but they need to get to and from. And finally, so what would be nice, and recently experienced this at a hotel in San Francisco, is that if we can partner with some of the hotels. It is an added benefit for people visiting to use the hotel, just to have those bikes available for sightseeing, maybe along the airport corridor there. That would be lovely, and I think that would benefit a lot of people. So I'm looking forward to this. It sounds exciting, but you do need to pass the hill test.
Yes, we'd love to have a demo. We never turn away another opportunity.
Okay, the challenge is on. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Snyder.
Thank you, Mayor. Can I say how exciting this is? Andrea, great presentation. It was about four years ago, maybe three years ago, the Vice Mayor and I were on the Micro Mobility Subcommittee, and we had a meeting with Lime Bikes, and literally the next day, they dropped bicycles from their work. So after all that work that staff put in and all our hope, this is very exciting. So Andrea, one question for you, and then some technical ones. I didn't catch your last name. I'm on CCAG. I'm the Chair of our County Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, so some of my questions will relate to universality. Andrea, how interested is San Bruno in joining us, or are they going to kind of see how we're working out? Because it'd be great to bring San Bruno on too.
Yeah, we presented to their BPAC, and thank you for making that connection. We shared what our plans were, and they seem very interested. I know that Spin would be also willing to expand into other cities, and I'm hoping that they'll be really fast followers. There's really, you know, I don't think anything that would prevent them from our end, at least.
Great. Then you talked about the program could roll out in five weeks. We're heading into the winter period. We don't know if we're going to have rain or not this season, but that might impact the data. Are we prepared to know that we're going into the hardest time, the least travel time? So just be prepared for that.
Good point.
One of the things we've been talking about at CCAG is, and what I like that you're in 27 different countries, or 21, is have you used universal symbols? So that if you're, I'm assuming China, or Italy, or Ukraine, the same symbols work in every place? Is there? Because we've been talking about universality of signage from city to city on that, so that people don't get confused like they do with our garbage programs, where every city is different.
So like on the app, for example, like the parking locations, or trying to think, signage for parking, for example?
Yeah, or even, you talked about doing some stenciling. Is it the same stencil that you probably use in every country you're in? So if we've got a lot of visitors from around the world, which we do through this airport, they might feel very comfortable. They're going to be very familiar.
Yeah, for the stencils, we could actually order and customize based on, so we could take recommendations from the Subcommittee. I do have an example in one of the slides that staff had provided. There's a, you see a picture of a bike on the floor.
And that's cool. I don't want to have to take up more sta, I just know that we're trying to look at what might help users feel comfortable as they go city by city, because they don't know when Millbrae ends and Burlingame or San Bruno begins. So if it's system, if it's consistent. And then, when I read through the pricing at 42 cents a minute, did I get that right? If I wanted to, if I was at a hotel and I wanted to go up and see the San Andreas Fault, where the famous earthquake happened, I'd be gone at least 30 minutes. That could be pricey. Is there a pass, like a half-day pass, or a? There is. I must have missed that when I was reading it. Okay, so that those users, and especially maybe some of our visitors, I have a dream that with the new bike kitchen opening at the gateway, and with our trail systems, and the next grant that we're going to talk about, we can get people traveling here to access our Ridge Trail and our Bay Trail. So this could be the beginning of just something really wonderful. And I agree, I think it was the Vice Mayor that said our hotels might be a good place. The only thing I would caution, we have lost people on El Camino Real. Often, they are visitors. We lost a young man just a few years ago who went to get dinner, crossed El Camino Real, and was hit by a car and killed. So what I would love to see in your app is look out for fast traffic. Even when somebody was mentioning taking, if the kids from middle school came down to the library, you, I live in that neighborhood, you will not believe how fast people drive. So if there's some warnings that El Camino can be a scary place.
Again, 18 years old.
Yeah, no, I know, I know. I just, I worry all the time, and City Manager, I hope now that we're getting a few things off our to-do list, we can bring the traffic calming project back, and we kind of sync this in with traffic calming, make people aware.
Can I add? If you're going to reach out to the hotels, maybe they can be a financial partner as well here, so that we can expand the program instead of a freebie. Just, just a thought. And corporately speaking, so Google, next door in San Bruno, has their own system where workers can get a G-bike and tootle around or get to the station back and forth. So for future partnerships or expansion of this program, that would be great. Thank you.
And I would only finish. Once this program's been in place for a couple of months, please, Andrea, you just have to ask me, I'll get you on the agenda, and come and report out to CCAG BPAC. We would love to hear how things are going and how we might help, lessons learned. So I'm very excited. Thank you, and I look forward to the partnership.
Yeah, us as well. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I would like-
It's a little small, apologies, a little bit small on this logo here. You could see it's a bike sign, yeah. And we can, of course, change the size of the stencil on the floor as well.
And, I'm sorry, I need to bring up one thing here. So MTC is actually working on wayfinding, which is standardization of this type of thing. Your logo's cute, but hopefully, all that will be incorporated throughout. No, they're way off, but, you know, just for future reference, hopefully we'll have some consistency on this micro mobility aspect. Thank you.
Can I build on that? Because Burlingame is on the Micro Mobility Task Force for the county, they'll have more information than I would. But, and the county just is completing, we both, both Commute.org, and we voted on it, I believe, the micro mobility plan. Is there some language in there that talks about consistent visuals on that? Just something to check, Andrea. More work for you.
No problem. Happy to-
Thank you.
And the report out, if the report out can please come to council, that would be great. We'd like to know before it gets everywhere else, we'd like to know where we are. And this requires action, guys, so that's, I'm going to go to public. I think there might have been one public, Wayne Lee, would you like to make a comment?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor and members of City Council. This is a great project. Congratulations, Andrea. Well done. There's some, this is going to solve a lot of problems, hopefully, especially the traffic and parking impacts to the neighborhoods in East Bayside Manor and Marina Vista and San Massimo area. So I'm looking forward to this project. Some concerns are, what, I heard that there was going to be bike racks. That'd be great, because we lack bike racks downtown, and I can't see how we're going to encourage people to get out of their cars and shop, use bicycle when there's no bike racks downtown. Two, I would encourage the city to take a deposit down in case something happens to the company and they pull out suddenly without, and leaving all of the infrastructure without removing it. Normally, you know, like when you rent the house, you put down the deposits to make sure that the house or department is restored to its original condition. So I would encourage the city to take a deposit for that. And also, going uphill is a problem, but going downhill is a bigger problem. So as a bicyclist coming downhill, I reach speeds of 50, I can easily reach speeds of 50 miles an hour if I didn't brake. And braking is a challenge going down those hills. So I would look into safety issues for that as well, and going downhill, Crest is not a good idea, it's too narrow of a street and many bumps. So maybe we can direct people who come downhill to more safer streets. And especially, yeah, especially not come down Larksburg, because that's a very steep hill. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me check for anybody else here. Who's on the Subcommittee here? I'm sorry, I didn't remember the Subcommittee.
No, we canceled the Subcommittee during COVID.
So move approval.
Second.
Thank you. Will we please have a vote?
Councilmember Snyder?
Aye.
Councilmember Oliver?
Aye.
Councilmember Feng?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Papin?
Yes.
Mayor Aliva?
Yes.
Is this existing business number 10 passed by the vote of 5 to 0?
Thank you. All right, let's move on to new business. We have a resolution supporting Skyline Boulevard Bicycle and Pedestrian Improvements Projects submitting an application to San Mateo County Transportation Authority for Cycle and Pedestrian and Bicycle Program. This requires action as well. And Tom, is Andrea Papajon still here?
She is, Mayor.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Andrea? Thank you.
Mayor Aliva, Vice Mayor Papin, Councilmembers Andrea Papajon, City Millbrae. So in August, the San Mateo County Transportation Authority announced a call for projects for their 2022 Cycle 6 Pedestrian and Bike Program. So we are here to recommend the City Council support our application for funding of the project. Let's see, could you pull up the slides if you can? Okay, so the project is called the Skyline Boulevard Bicycle and Pedestrian Improvement Project. There's a need for improved improvements to increase safety at the intersection of Skyline and Larksburg, and along Skyline Boulevard from Larksburg to Hillcrest. And as you just heard, we're planning a bike sharing program, so increasing safety for cyclists and pedestrians is important and relevant. So just to go over on some of the key elements of the project's scope, and I'll show a couple pictures after this slide. But the project improvements would include modifying and installing sidewalks on the south side of Larksburg Drive, installing a crosswalk at Larksburg and Skyline, installing a Class 4 facility on the west side of Skyline between Larksburg and Hillcrest, and then upgrading the two standard crosswalks to high-visibility crosswalks at the intersections of Skyline and Riverton, and Skyline and Hillcrest. Just to have a quick look at these, the one on the left is Skyline Boulevard at Larksburg. We'd be installing high-visibility crosswalks. The one in the middle and on the right are at Skyline Boulevard in Riverton, and Skyline Boulevard and Hillcrest Boulevard intersections. There's standard crosswalks there, we'd be upgrading them to high-visibility crosswalks. And then, in this, in this diagram, this is Skyline Boulevard between Larksburg and Hillcrest. The top, the top diagram is the existing condition, and the bottom one is our proposed, is our project. So we would remove the Class 2 on the east side, shift the vehicle lanes, and increase the cycle track to eight feet on the west side, and install a three-foot buffer with concrete separator curbs for a Class 4 facility. So we did outreach to, we presented the project to the Millbrae B PAC at their meeting and they gave us some great feedback. We also, we also conducted outreach to residents about the specific project and they also gave us the level of interest was very high with a consensus relating to the current unsafe site conditions for all users, including, you know, dog walkers, pedestrians, bikers, motorists. So some of the feedback already coincided with our current plan and some we actually incorporated in our design. And then we received letters of support from the Silicon Valley Bike Coalition and commute.org as well as from our B PAC. So the estimated cost of the project is 1.844 million. We're recommending a city match of 12%, which would be $221,398. This could come from the gas tax, the highway user tax account. And so we would like to recommend the city council adopt a resolution supporting the project and funding the application. I thank you for your time. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Let's see who we have here first. Councilmember Snyder?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Papajon. I loved the the staff report and it definitely built on the criticisms that this grant, this location, the city had applied for this through the TDA Article Three Grant last fall. And you've really expanded the photographs. You really stressed how narrow the sidewalks are. Did all of those photographs get into the grant application?
Yes, they did.
Excellent, excellent. That should help a great deal. I really liked how you added in that this is a priority connectivity issue, something that we're supposed to be funding, but it doesn't always work that way in the grant application. So I think it's a great job. I'm happy to make a motion to approve the resolution and well done on this application.
Second.
Uh, councilmember Fung, we have a motion and a second. Councilmember Fung, comments?
Yeah, just a question. Obviously, this is a great program. I'd be happy to support it. It's just that if you go back to a couple of slides where you show the sort of cross section of the sidewalk and the roadway.
Can you back it up for me, Eduardo? I'm not able to. One more, that one?
There you go. Yeah, that's it. Is there any opportunity where the the divider between the vehicular lane and the bike lane, could there be some sort of a, you know, maybe three or four foot tall landscaping there to screen it off a bit to get a little bit more protected?
Yeah, that's a very good point. Thank you. We actually received feedback from the B PAC on this and I'm just looking at my notes. One of the members, I believe he's on the B PAC, actually Walter Levinson, but he was incredibly helpful and he actually looked into some options and he even shared one that's called an armadillo. And it's like the shell of an armadillo and it's installed at an angle. So the car wheels would get pushed away from the bike lane if they swerve toward the bike lane. And so, you know, the design that we submitted is not a final design, so we could definitely incorporate that, you know, based on the standard and the costs. But we really appreciated that feedback and, you know, we thought it was a really great solution. So thank you for asking.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Fung. Councilmember Holliver?
Thank you. Great work on this project. Just one other comment that I don't know if it's included in the grant application or maybe can be added to the grant application. This segment between Larksburg and Hillcrest is essentially the connection for the Crystal Springs Trail because it doesn't, there's a path that goes from Hillcrest to Larksburg, but there isn't a bicycle path that go, it doesn't connect. PUC could make it connect if they were to open that gate at the end of Larksburg, but that's seems unlikely to happen anytime soon. So maybe worth noting that this is an important regional trail linkage as well. Could be some points there. I'd also be remiss not to mention there's a very unsafe bike access on to 280 between Millbrae Avenue and Truesdale. So maybe that can be the next project is now that we have a good relationship with Burlingame over the bike share program, maybe we could work on a solution to, you know, bridging that gap so that cyclists don't have to go on the freeway over that segment. That's all I have.
Thank you. Yes, just to comment, we did, we have included that it's access to the regional trail and then I had an extra slide here. So, gosh, I'm sorry, I guess I need help. Why, I'm not sure why I can't advance. Pardon me? Could you please? I just wanted to show one thing. I don't know if you saw it. It's after this. One more, one more. Oh, yeah, this one. Yeah. So is this what you're referring to, councilmember Holliver? That there this is?
It's the next one. It has, it shows the white striping and then it shows a fence. That's the only connectivity because best up use.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's the right, no, that's the image on the left. You see the, yeah, the white striping that councilmember Schneider mentioned in the in the corner, lower corner there. That's where they could access.
Yeah.
But, you know, essentially that's the only way out of that segment of the Crystal Springs Trail if you then want to connect to the Sawyer Camp Trail. So in a sense, you could say it's not necessarily a transit connection. It's really a, the only way to, it really is a part of that, a segment almost of that greater regional trail.
Exactly, yes. I appreciate what you're saying and I don't think I have any more slides of the other attachments. It was probably the next page on the attachment, so.
Ms. Papajon, if I can help you?
Yes.
Just be aware that at the CCGB PAC level, and last year's chair was Malcolm Robison from San Bruno, we have brought that up multiple times and I think it's an excellent point and I am happy to bring that up because, yeah, you come down Skyline Boulevard from San Bruno and you have to be on the freeway for about 400, 500 yards and the drivers hate it and the cyclists hate it. And SFPUC opens up part of that road in San Bruno, but not in Millbrae. So it is definitely a critical, a critical safety issue. That would be great for Millbrae and San Bruno to work together.
Great, thank you. I hope we get this grant and find the design.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment? I don't see any hands raised.
Call for the question.
All right, let me just check for hands for a second. Oh, we already have a motion and a second, so we'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Snyder?
Aye.
Councilmember Holliver?
Aye.
Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pappen?
Aye.
Mayor Aliva?
Yes.
Item number 11 passed by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you, thank you, staff. Thank you, council.
Thank you, Ms. Papajon.
Good work. Yes. Ms. Papajon was busy today with us. Okay, we're going to move to council comments. Two minutes. Do we need to put the clock up or can we go for two minutes?
I thought we got three with the timer.
Oh, we're doing two like the rest of the crowd. So councilmember Snyder, you're up first.
Okay, I brought show and tell. Because Ms. Papajon is still here for everybody, this is the adopt a spot that we piloted and then we had our second event. It's at the corner of Hillcrest and Hemlock. So everyone in Millbrae will be rolling this out in the new year. We're still working out some of the participation bugs on that. The event that the city manager left out is the Millbrae Train Museum is official grand reopening is Saturday, October 21st, same time as the art show, but that's okay, 12 to 4:00. And if anybody from the museum or the historical society, I brought you some gifts from the electrification event, I will get these down to you. But and a big shout out to our big historian, John Muniz, who is not feeling well. So I hope that John will be feeling better in time for that. The man and woman of the year, I couldn't be happier this year. I'm always happy every year, but this year, our past Leo's president, Brian Wen, is the student of the year, Joy Passamonte Henry and Paul Harrell. I think it's they made a lovely set of choices and I'm looking forward to Friday. The art show, as the city manager said, if it is not too late to submit art pieces, October 20th is the last day. You can find it by going to Millbrae Art Show on the website. Please submit. We have all kinds of racks and that Friday night event from six to nine o'clock is the reception, so there'll be food and drinks and munchies. And we want everybody to come on out and have fun. The next day, Saturday, will be from 12 to 6:00. And we are, the MCAC, the Cultural Arts Committee, is also working on the Dia de los Muertos with our assistant city manager and our, our police chief helping with that. So on Wednesday, October 26th, it's still somewhat tentative, there will be a Dia de los Muertos event at the rec center at, from six to eight or I might have to get the, we'll get the posting out on that. It's going to include dancing by several groups and setting up an altar. The altar will remain in the rec center through the art show and up until November 1st and 2nd. So this is a way to celebrate all of us who have lost loved ones and to remember them with honor and pride. The train museum pollution prevention, ah, pollution prevention, another shout out to Ms. Papajon. She has been very busy. We had our Pollution Prevention Day last Saturday. It was a perfect day. We collected a lot of garbage, including this really lovely sweatshirt near the rec center, which I hope has a first of lost and found. So it's been washed and it looks like a tween lost their sweatshirt. So but this was to me the most interesting thing found in the lost and found. There was some pretty incredible stuff along the fence with the apartment. City manager, I have to turn it over to code enforcement that the volunteers couldn't pick up. So it has been a busy week.
Yeah, I think the mayor's trying to.
Oh, I'm sorry, mayor.
Scan here over there.
I'm done.
You may have used some of that time to councilmember Holliver, so I'm sorry, councilmember Holliver, you have a minute and a half.
I'm sorry.
Anyways, I don't think I'll need that much time. I don't think any of my committees met since our last meeting. Just a couple of items that I think are important that we work on in the coming months. I mentioned earlier during our special session that the SB nine urgency ordinance that we had approved towards the beginning of the year, that expires in about two months and mid-December. So I know we were working on a permanent, long-term ordinance and haven't heard anything about that recently. So it'd be good if we could get that on one of our upcoming agendas before the end of the year. Also, I had a chat with Vice Mayor Pappen and also with the city manager recently about the MSASP. You know, the gateway development construction is nearing completion and there were a number of improvements that we had identified within the MSASP such as adding the second right turn lane off of Millbrae Avenue onto El Camino Real, adding the median fencing to prevent jaywalking near the station. And those have not been implemented yet, but I think it would be worthwhile having some type of an update, maybe even at our next council meeting to see where we are on those improvements and what needs to be done. I know it's takes a long time. It's difficult to deal with Caltrans, but I hope those discussions are ongoing and I think that update would be useful for the council. Thanks very much.
Thank you, councilmember Holliver. Can we go to councilmember Fung, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So Millbrae, 75 years old coming up in January. So we just had a couple of meetings on the subcommittee. You know, we have a local contest, still needs everybody to participate in voting. I think it's already on social media, so everybody please cash your vote to figure out what our next 75 years birthday celebration logo should be. We still can welcome more participation from, you know, all the, all the surface club and nonprofit organizations here in our city. You know, we have a lot of exciting ideas coming up, how to celebrate our 75 years anniversary. So we want everybody to participate here. So our lunch program with the seniors this past week with the self-help of the elderly at the Jacuti Room. Everybody learned that Millbrae is committed to working with them for the next two years and increase our lunch program from three to five days a week. And everybody is just joyous about this decision. Everybody was so happy that it's, it's so nice to see everybody coming together again and after two years of COVID, all the seniors were very, very happy. So I think it's a great decision we made and I'm very thankful that we're able to offer that to our senior citizens. That's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Pappen?
Thank you very much. Can somebody please address the Millbrae historic sign? Our movie sign is missing some letters again. So please, also noting that there's an unapproved sign on the gateway project and how that's being dealt with. And another part of the conditions of approval was also some artwork and the parking elements planned there. Yes, the 75th anniversary is coming together nicely. It's in January, January 14th, but it's appearing to be projects that will continue throughout the year. So it's going to be very, very exciting. Did attend along with councilmember Schneider and I think councilmember Fung was there too, the debuting of Caltrain's electric train cars, which really are spectacular and hopefully tomorrow they, if we can do this, MTC will give them some additional funding so that they can actually start operations, I think in 2024. So that would be very exciting. Millbrae Age Friendly Program was accepted by ARP and we hope to implement many aspects of our age friendly program coming up very soon. And that should also be a great addition to our city operations. And I think that's, that's it at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. So many, everybody's busy, busy, busy. So tonight we are going to end our city council meeting in close in memory of John Kryshnikov, who is a husband of a very, very active community leader and on the Community Enhancement Advisory Committee. And she is our chair, Carol. And Carol, our thoughts and prayers are with you and I would like to close in memory of your husband, John. Thank you, everybody, and have a good night.
And congratulations, Madam Mayor. On the, the babies, the grandchildren.
Yeah, thank you. We'll close in honor of John, please.